Welcome back, friends. You're listening to the second episode of the Plugged In LaPorte Podcast. I'm your host Nate Lauks and I'm thrilled that you have decided to join us once again. This episode, like every episode, is sponsored by the LaPorte Economic Advancement Partnership. We're working hard to promote growth, innovation, and prosperity in the LaPorte community. On today's show, we're going to be diving into the heart of LaPorte County. We have a fantastic lineup of guests and we're going to be discussing major developments, impactful stories, economic stuff, and the pulse of our community. First on the show, we have none other than LaPorte County Councilman Randy Novak and Mike Rosenbaum in the studio. Now Randy's the current president of the council and Randy's the former president, so I thought it'd be fun to get them in together in the studio. They're not even a part of the same party yet. We can be in the same room together. They're going to enlighten us on the happenings in LaPorte County, the challenges we face, upcoming projects, and how all of this will shape our future together. It's going to be a conversation you won't want to miss, especially if you're interested in the direction of our community. Additionally, I had the pleasure of speaking with Jessica Granger, who I just met actually for the first time. She's the driving force behind Tody Floral, one of LaPorte's beloved local businesses. You've probably seen it on Lincoln Way. She's going to share her story as a small business owner here in the city of LaPorte. There's lots of talk about traffic on Lincoln Way. We talked about that. What it takes to keep flowers blooming in Northwest Indiana and businesses thriving. And perhaps the secret of her success. Do we even have a little bit of a conversation about what flowers are the best flowers? Trust me when I say you're going to want to stay informed about what's making an impact in LaPorte. So whether you're a lifelong resident or just curious about what makes LaPorte, Indiana so special, you're in the right place. Together, let's get plugged in, stay informed, and celebrate the community we call home. All right, are you ready to kick things off? Let's get curious, connected, and plugged in. Joining us in the studio are two significant figures in LaPorte County's politics and community. We have with us Randy Novak, LaPorte County Council President, and Mike Rosenbaum, the former council president. They will share insights on a range of topics, from the pressing issues facing our county to the exciting projects that they may have the potential to redefine LaPorte's economic landscape. Some may not know, but Randy is a Democrat and Mike is a Republican. This is a unique opportunity to hear from both sides of the political spectrum, discussing what is most important, the future of LaPorte County. Randy, Mike, welcome to the show. How are you guys?
Good afternoon.
It's good to have you guys here.
It's good to be here. Thank you.
So you guys are, obviously, Mike, you are, how long have you been on the council now? I cannot remember now.
This is, I'm starting my sixth year.
Sixth year, Randy, how long?
10th.
10th year. And so you guys have been working together for quite some time now. You've outlived and outlasted a couple other council members and you guys, it seems like me, from watching the council meetings as I do, I'll text sometimes either of you after the council meeting and then, what I love about your guys' relationship, let me say this, is obviously different political parties, but, and you guys don't always agree with each other. And I've seen you guys frustrated at each other in a meeting before, but it also seems like you genuinely kind of like each other and you get along okay. Is that true?
Absolutely.
Or is that just for the cameras?
No, no, we're not partying hearty outside of the, you know, the chamber or anything like that, but we do. We have conversation on a regular basis. And if I don't like something, you know, or I'm not sure I understand something, Randy, you know, has been very kind to take the phone calls. And, you know, there's been a few moments where I might have been upset on a call or two, and, but those have calmed down because, you know, now that I actually was president last year, saw how the shoe fit, and you start realizing, oh my God, you know, and you start changing. But the biggest part is when you're in local government, you know, party politics has got to be put aside and start thinking, what is the right thing to do? And I think both of us have that philosophy. And, you know, even from day one, and when I first got on there, it was, you know, it was a completely different, more of a democratic control, and then it slowly rolled, you know, to almost an even control now. And so with that being said, you know, you just have to immediately from the start, you learn, you need to talk to people, need to work with people, and that's what we've been doing. And I think, I think part of being successful as the president of the council is really getting to know the people that you work with and, and do the best that you can. I mean, obviously, you're not going to get along with everybody, but you do the best you can. And sometimes you change relationships, and that has happened. So it's been quite an interesting experience.
The key thing about, this is my opinion, obviously, that I'm expressing, but a sign of a good leadership leader is somebody that, we can disagree on items, but we, it's not, it doesn't go into, I hate him, or I won't talk to him, or I'm not going, you know, and mean, and put him on a different level. We don't, people don't have to, politicians, elected officials, people in business, we can disagree. We can respectfully disagree, and then we can move on. And if he votes against something that I want, so be it. It's over, it's done with. We move on to the next item. But that's the way it needs to be, this, this animosity that is out there, and the way things are just needs to stop. The politic, you know, when you're elected, you're no longer, you should no longer be a Republican or a Democrat. You shouldn't be getting pressure from your party to go one way or the other. It should be, we're here to do the business of the people and all the people. Period.
Should be, right? But I think from, from, from the national state down to local politics, it doesn't always work out that way.
Right.
I wish everyone was altruistic about what they, what they did. But we'll talk a little bit about LaPorte County politics. Mike, you know, you're an outsider. You're from New York, is that right?
Well, I was born in New York, lived there for a portion of my life till like 27, got married, moved to New Jersey, lived there for another 23, 25 years.
North or south?
Northern part, close to the city, because I worked in the city. And then, you know, after, as my son is about to graduate, the youngest one from high school, we said we could live anywhere. And then we started shopping around of places to go live and move. And like a typical tax accountant, I find out what state has a balanced budget and what state is in the black, and the cost of living is a little different, like 30% lower than where I used to live. And it's like, wow, this is, this was a really good opportunity to come move cross-country. And, you know, and I tell you, it's been a good move in a sense where we, we got to be part of our neighborhood. We've got some really great neighbors. And, you know, I was able to re-enter politics locally after being in politics back in New Jersey.
And so I'm always interested and fascinated by this. I've got friends that have moved to LaPorte from other places and things like this. What was your impression when you got to LaPorte? Like what, how would you have defined it then? And how do you define it now?
Well, I would say it was very sleepy when I first got here. And so that's 13 years ago. And, and so it was very different, different mayor, you know, that we were not progressing and moving forward the way we are now. There's been the change, and we've seen the last five years, we've seen tremendous change. And, you know, part of it's economic as well. It could be the right economic time to make change, and which we've seen, and we see the great effort that's being made by the city. So that's part of it. I actually thought I was going to really live closer to Notre Dame of all places. And, and it was kind of ironic that I chose, after joining Rotary for work, and had to come out here for Rotary meetings, which from, you know, South Bend is that hour difference, and they didn't understand I was running for an hour late lunch, and then I'm coming back in the middle of the afternoon. But that's what started it, and that's what got me introduced to the area and started going to the events that they had. And next thing you know, my wife joined me at one of them. Next thing, you know, we've been asked, why aren't you looking here? And we did. And we found an old house and, and in need of saving. And it's, it's, we're working on it, as best I can say.
Old houses, any of our listeners know, old houses, you never stop working on them. But Randy, you, you've been in the area for quite some time. I don't know if you were born and raised here, but you've been here for quite a while. You've been Michigan City Fire Chief and, you know.
We moved here in 1969.
Okay.
So I was nine years old at that time.
Okay. And so you've been here for, for quite some time, way longer than I was even alive. And so, so I would, I would, what I'd like from you though, is to think broadly. LaPorte County is in this really weird ecosystem, right? We're in the region. The other counties in the region, or the two other primary counties in the region, Lake and Porter, don't always recognize us as they should. We can't necessarily attach ourselves to St. Joe County because we don't share a time zone. Anybody that doesn't think that's a big deal, it is a big deal asking anybody in the New Prairie School system, right? It is a big deal. So we, we operate in this weird ecosystem here. We're not a small county. We have over 100,000 people. How would you describe LaPorte County to somebody that doesn't maybe know us?
The thing that I love about LaPorte County, and personally, I, I can't imagine living somewhere else. And being retired from the Michigan City Fire Department, having a career in real estate since 98, if I wanted to, my wife and I could move anywhere we wanted and do something. I don't, I can't imagine living somewhere else. The thing that LaPorte County has to offer, being the second largest county in the state of Indiana, being on the south shore of Lake Michigan, and everything that has to offer with the, with the farmlands, with, with the park systems that we have, with the Kankakee River running to the south, and just the blend of everything. You've got the cities, we're close to Chicago, we're close to South Bend, we're close to Valparaiso. We're close to everything, but we get, we get, it's like, I don't want to say it's like small town like Mayberry, but it's like, we get to maintain our identity here. And it's, this is LaPorte County, and it's, it's what it was, it's what it is, and it's growing, and it's getting better, and it's getting bigger. But it's, 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 it's just, it's not comparable to, you know, if you drive through Lake and Porter County, it is nothing like here. And, and we just have so much more to offer for all of our residents.
I just want to add one thing. One of the unique things about LaPorte County, and you mentioned the farms, and, you know, growing up in a big city like Brooklyn, New York, and New York City, and working there quite a bit of my, my career. You talk about home life, and home life, and you talk about food, and you talk about sustainability. But the best part is, there's nothing like getting meats from a local farmer. I will tell you, that has been the biggest difference, you know, of all things. I mean, yeah, I miss some seafood that you could get easier on the East Coast, but when it comes to getting the freshest meat ever, and then also being participating in the, in the 4H fair and this, and the animals, and the, you know, and all of that and, and stuff. It's just amazing to do that. And, and, you know, we keep looking at it in our freezer when it goes down, okay, when do we need to make the next call, you know? And, and it's just been, it's just been great to, you know, in that part too.
Okay. So, and I, I promise you, I'm not backing you into that, that answer or anything. But I do want to, so I've noticed that there's, I was just in South Bend, and there's lots of stuff happening in South Bend right now. They've got a great vision for the city, it seems like anyway. I lived in South Bend for 15 years, and it looks vastly different from when I moved in 2015. We've got subdivisions going on around Porter County all, like, like crazy still. Lake County obviously has got development over there. I agree with you. LaPorte County, I think, has a great, you know, a great place. We, we balance the urban and rural very, very effectively here. But why aren't we seeing some of the, the great growth and infrastructure and economic improvements here in LaPorte County that many of our neighboring counties are?
So our, our housing, the, one of the things with the vibrant community study, and you were there.
I was, yep.
So is, is the housing. We need more affordable and middle-class housing and upper-class housing. We need all classes of housing for LaPorte, so that we can keep our residents here, so the people can stay here, so that it, you know, there's a shortage of condos. So when people climb the ladder and get ready to retire, and they do want to go to a condo, it's very limited what's available for them. So we need that. We need starter homes for the workforce that we need when, to bring businesses here. So that is, that is a big part of it. And why it hasn't taken off, you know, who knows? It took off over in Porter County. Now Porter County is a little bit, we've seen their prices come down a little bit, just because they've got so much market over there, and there's so much housing over there, that they have, we still have a shortage over here, so.
Which, which really inflates our, our home prices right now, right? I mean, you can look in, you look at some of our home prices, and they're not all that different than Porter County right now because of the, the amount of people that do want to live here and the few, few housing options.
We balance, we balance from the farmland, which is a huge economic factor in LaPorte County, to, to, you know, iconic down the road, that's the, you know, aerospace. So I mean, we've got, we've got both ends of the spectrum, from, all the way from, you know, what people classify as a simple farmer, all the way up to, you know, they're making parts for the space shuttle or whatever, you know, military crafts, right here in LaPorte County. So we've got everything.
And I also want to add, one of the things that slows the growth is whether or not you do have infrastructure. You brought up that word. And it's not just roads for infrastructure, it's water and sewer. And so now that they're starting to see some expansion, and we've seen probably what, in the last 20 years, we're starting to see more sewer projects. And now we see even more expansion of the sewer projects in the last 10 years. That's going to make water available to homes. And more importantly, it's going to make sewer available because septics can only do so much. And when you're in small parcels of land, places that were only meant to be like summer places, and then they became year-round, you know, and then that fails, and you've got no place to move your septic. So you, you just have to have some better systems.
And he's absolutely right. We're limited with Michigan City, LaPorte, Westville are the primary ones that have sewer system. Now Lacrosse has one, but it's, they're all the way down on the south end of the county. But, so to expand some people, and it's easier over in Porter County, because they're not putting them on septic, they're putting them on city water and city sewer, and it makes it easier. You can put the houses closer together. You don't have, you know, to plan for the septic. And then you've got to plan if the septic goes bad, where they're going to put it then. So there's a lot more space there. So one of the things that we're working on, Mike and I, we both sit on redevelopment commission, is extending water and sewer from the municipalities out into the county. So one of the projects we have is out on 300 North and 421, where the new Loves Truck Stop is. And so it was a four and a half million dollar project. The county put in $2 million of it. We floated bonds for the other two and a half million dollars through the TIF district out there. And we got water and sewer going all the way out to that area out there. So it's serving the Chevy dealer that's out there, the Harley dealer, all those businesses out there had failed septic systems and needed this out there. So we expanded that. We have plans to take it out to 35 and 94 for another expansion out there outside of Michigan City. As you know, the 39 North TIF District, where the city's annexing, that going out there, we're looking at expanding past that and going all the way out to 20 with our next TIF, so that we can extend the sewer lines and the water lines. And we can do it in these TIF areas ahead of the municipalities. And then if the municipality wants to come along later and annex it, that's between the city and the residents. That's not, that's not mine. But it's, it's in place, and there's room to expand then.
So Randy, then, you know, both the major cities in our county, LaPorte and Michigan City, have said, we will not provide utilities to areas that have not annexed first now. So is that going to be a challenge then, getting them to come back on that idea?
We just, Loves just opened their doors.
Okay.
So the city, I think the, the, the previous administration in Michigan City allowed the Loves Truck Stop one, but then they were reluctant to do the one out on 35. I think the new administration might be more open to that, because here's the thing. It, it saves the residents of Michigan City, it keeps their costs lower on their sanitation because they have more users on the system. And that's, that's what it's all based on. It's all based on users. So by expanding that, and Michigan City has, you know, they're inspiring to, to move their borders out. We know that. But we just, we need to work better together, and we're getting this, the water and the sewer out there, and it just makes it even easier for them to do it down the road.
So what do you guys think is the relationship, or what the relationship should be between county government and city government? Because we've got these different, you know, each, each, each entity, right, has its own council. Each, you know, now the county doesn't necessarily have a single executive. They've got three executives in the commission, but, you know, the city has a mayor. So A, what, what, what would you like to see that relationship maybe look like?
Well, each of us have an economic development group. And what we're starting to see, beginning more and more in the past year, is there's a lot more communication. And sometimes that's the people, sometimes it's, we tell the people that this is what we really need, and this is what we're starting to see. And I'm starting to see a little bit more of that. From that becomes cooperation. And then what happens is we, we start sharing what our projects are going on, so we can help one another. One of the things that we do is, you know, at the county level, and it's also being done at the, at other levels, is that we have business retention visits. So also to keep the businesses that are here happy, it takes people from the county, from the local area, to go visit them, make sure that we have what they have in case they need growth. What is it that we can do to help them to grow and keep them here and not leave? Because once you have a building and a facility here, it's very difficult to leave. And, and you'd rather help them expand somehow. And so that's another part of the process that we're also talking about. And again, it's the cooperation of the different units of really speaking.
And in Michigan City, we, we gave, from ARP funds, $500,000 to Paladin.
ARP was the COVID-related funds, correct?
Correct. Inside Michigan City, it's my understanding, the city of Michigan City gave nothing towards them. We gave $30,000 to the Lebesse Nick Center for the Arts. We gave $50,000 to North Central Community Action Agency. So we've spent more money in, we, quite a bit in Michigan City. I mean, pushing probably, you know, 600, $700,000 that we committed to organizations there to help them out, that they've come to us. So.
Yeah, but as, as an outsider that just hears the whispers, right? I'm, I'm involved in lots of different entities, and I'm friends with you guys, and I'm friends with all these things. You hear the whispers of competition though, right? Because it, while you want it symbiotic, right, where if, if one of us succeeds, we all succeed, it's not necessarily, I think, the spirit that we see, right? And maybe you're right, Mike, Councilman Rosenbaum, maybe the communication is the first part of making that better, right?
And I think the communication with the new administration in Michigan City, obviously Mayor Dermody does a great job communicating, and, and, and we work very closely with, you know, Bert and Mike over there and stuff. And, but, but, and I think you're absolutely right. You know, everybody, if you push them, they'll say, well, you know, a job in, a factory in Michigan City is jobs for everybody in LaPorte County. But the truth is, if you're an economic development guy in Michigan City, you're going to go, I want that feather in my cap, not over there.
I want that tax money, right? I want that tax money here in LaPorte, right?
But why would we take a chance on losing, in other words, if, if there's a better place outside of Michigan City for this factory to locate, or maybe it's in LaPorte City. They need to be working to make sure we capture this in LaPorte County and not let them go somewhere else.
Better that one of us have it than all of us lose it, correct?
Right, exactly.
And, and that's where another area comes into place, KIP. We have vast amount of space there. I won't say it's unlimited, but, you know, there's also.
I rode my bike down there this summer, and it is, it seemed unlimited as I was going, where am I out of here?
Yeah. And hopefully the roads get smoother, so that'll be easier to ride. But anyway, the, the point of bringing it up is that there's great opportunity there. And then here's another thing that's been done by the redevelopment. It's working on getting that railroad with getting the connections to get in and out of there.
Explain that railroad a little bit. What is the, what is the goal of this railroad? Like, for our listeners that might not know, I feel like Kingsbury has been a project that the county has been wanting to develop or redevelop my whole life. And it feels like, I keep on hearing, we're almost there, you know?
Yeah. And I'm going to, I'm going to ask Randy to, because he's been on the RDC longer, and he's been, he's been working harder on this. And I've been so glad to join and see some things.
Learning, yeah, exactly, yeah.
So, so years ago, before I got on the council, so you're right, you were probably 10 at the time? Just kidding. But out at KIP, the previous council in the county put $6 million into rail out at KIP, because there was going to be this cold storage train that was coming up from Florida, and they were going to do all this stuff. So they asked the county to invest, and it was major moves money from the sale, the lease of the toll road. $6 million in rail. When I came on the council, I got on the redevelopment, I went out there and go, so where, where's this rail? And it was literally a section of rail with nothing attached on both ends. It was a long stretch of nothing. You couldn't bring a train on there if you wanted to, because the project never went forward after the rail was installed.
But you had to spend that $6 million though, right?
It was stagnant, yeah. So, so here we are with this rail. So it's like, we have a CSX line to the south that's not connected. CSX line is right there.
Okay. It's just not connected, but it is there.
We just need a switch. That's what's missing from our thing to the CSX is a switch.
Okay.
Then on the north, CN comes into Limborge Elevator.
Okay, yep.
And it comes in there, but then the old bridge, as you come in down Hup Road, the old bridge, wood trestle bridge was deteriorated, so they couldn't bring trains in that way. The switch was always there, but the rail's missing. So we got a ready grant last year, and I think that we rebuilt the bridge. Limborge is now running the rail at his expense across the bridge. Jim Carroll from JB, JB Rail is installing the other stuff. So the county is getting the individuals out there to pony up and, and put their money into these projects, so that we're, we're not having to fund them.
With the goal of they'll be able to sell that property then, is that, what's their goal?
And JB's doing the, Jim Carroll's the one that's running, he's running the rail line for us. So in the meantime, fast forward, we, the county, because of, of the $6 million that we put in there, we foreclosed on all the rail out there. So we took them to court. The county took possession of all the rail with inside Kingsbury. So we now own the easements and all the rail for all of it. Of course, we, you know, don't really want to be in the rail business, but it's the only way that we could do it, because it was all owned by individuals. And, and if you wanted to run a train to your place, you had to ask six people.
It just wasn't clean enough. It just wasn't.
If they were mad at you, they'd charge, you know, and it just didn't work. So we got that all cleaned up. So the county now has all the rail. We get it all cleaned up. We got another ready grant to put in the switch, the CSX switch, which should be, the switch is in, it should be, we should have some kind of announcement coming hopefully within the next month, that that is in. They're, they're finishing up the rail on the north end going along Hup Road in front of the old Cheers Restaurant there, or facility. We'll have two major carriers in there. So we have more business right now. Companies coming out there wanting to look at that, and.
So when, when do you see, Mike, or Randy, when do you guys see some of this actual, you know, these businesses? Because I, I listen to the meetings, I hear, you know, we got people interested. When's it actually going to happen? Or when do you hope that it's going to happen? You know, this year?
We're, we're getting more visits last year than we had in prior years because of the progress on the rail. So there's extreme significance with that. And that once that's, once it's known and secure, then people can better make the decision. And so we've been laying out things, and the companies that are coming to us have been laying out things. And so we, we think that some decision-making processes will happen sooner than later. And then who knows? We're expecting that once, once the announcement that this is in and ready to go, that we might see even more. And I will tell you, even the state is trying to help out too. The state does their thing too, and they, they try and help us out.
So do you see the potential for this to be something like, I'm not saying the same companies, but the same kind of development we're seeing in New Carile, you know, where?
Exactly.
Is that the goal here maybe?
We have some, we have some companies that are looking at KIP that are support companies for the company that's coming in out in New Carile.
Yep.
So we have, we also have another company, without saying names or disclosing anything, but somebody that's looking to, they, they need 25 to 40 million bushels of corn a year. That would be, and for our current farming community here, that's a massive, massive.
It's a boon right there.
Oh my gosh, it would just be huge. So these are things, these are the companies that we're working with, trying to get everything worked out with the utilities, with all the different connections, with NIPSCO. We're sitting in meetings. We've got Kingsbury Utilities there, we've got NIPSCO there, we've got the state Economic Development Team there. Everybody's in there working these to try and make these work.
And when he's mentioned NIPSCO, that's something that most people don't realize, that they need X amount of energy, and it needs to be supplied, and it needs to be done at a cost, especially if you're manufacturing, at something that's cost-effective to another site, another community, and another utility. So all of a sudden now, the competition level between us and another state or another community within our state, or something like that, starts taking a different level. So this is not a, just a quick snap your fingers, we're going to make a decision, as you start hearing about all these different types of meetings that we need. And then there's also still the concern of, is there enough, is there enough employees? And so what type of businesses are coming in? What type, and also, what can these businesses also help us? Because sometimes when businesses come in, they also want to help on the housing side of things. We haven't had those discussions per se yet, but we know that these are opportunities. And who knows? We may start getting some of the national, some of the national builders to start looking, hey, this is an opportunity where, I mean, because, I mean, I lived in New Jersey, where, oh my God, I cannot tell you how many builders were there trying to build condos and townhouses all up and down the state when it was, when it was super hot 20, 30 years ago. And so what's happening is we need to have some sort of spark like that here.
And there is a housing development coming in Michigan City out on Paz Road. It's been laid out, and then I know Mayor Dermody has a parcel here that, that they're looking to develop. We, I've had conversations with him about, and they've got a home builder out there by 18th Street that they're going to look into build some homes. So we're trying to.
Steiner is coming in, but, you know, here, here's, here's a challenge for you guys. So obviously, you might not know this, Mike. My, my father developed subdivisions in this area. A lot of them rolling in Prairie, these kind of things. It doesn't develop anymore. But there was a development just last year that was going to go in right across the street from one of his. It was not going to be his development. And neighbors were. And neighbors remonstrated against it, or at least one or two of them did. And the, the, the project got nixed and that was gonna be 80 to 100 homes right there. So how do we say that we want, we want more housing, yet we say no to home?
What happened to that piece of property?
It is, it is now a, uh, turned into a field.
And it was a set of woods before, which it was gonna be clear cut anyway, but it's now a farm field, right?
So, so, so it's, it's hard because, you know, we, we hear about this and if somebody looking for houses and stuff like this, I want more houses because hopefully more houses means I won't have to pay as much for a house. But we had one right there and we said no to it.
The tough, the, the tough thing about La Porte County, change doesn't come easy in La Porte County. We all know that. And especially when you're out in the county. And if you're gonna put a subdivision someplace, people have to be open-minded to, to some expansion, to doing some things out in the county, to subdivisions and things. Because we, we have to grow, if we don't grow, we're gonna die.
Yeah.
And when we know that, we, we can't, the, the 110,000 of us can't support everything the way it is and want everything fixed.
And all the investment in Kingsbury will be nothing because we cannot get companies, correct? Or factories?
Or we'd hire people, but they're living outside someplace else.
Um, Mike, did you have something to, to add to that?
Well, I, I don't wanna be particular, but you brought up an issue, but there were many more complex things about it.
Sure.
Was it affordable housing at over $300,000? Was that company with deep pockets that could do all the things that they promised they could? So I don't know that this was the case. So I'm just throwing that there are little.
It was a developer with, with a good reputation.
Okay, so I'm just saying that there are some, you know, there are some things that may have also helped cause that. Now, if you're saying it was just a community, I don't think so. I think that they were, I, I think it was more than that.
Yeah.
I would, I would have liked to seen a developer looking at a, not farm ground necessarily, because we, we wanna preserve as much ag as we can. But, but to take a set of woods, solid woods and say, we're gonna just clear cut the whole thing and clear it down. There's gotta be a better place to find it. And we had, uh, when Tony Rodriguez was the economic development guy for La Porte County, we had meetings with Farm Bureau, so we sat down with them and said, hey, where, where can we put housing? Where are some places? Why it's not being expanded between, um, La Porte City and out to the Summit Farm? All that land that Mr. Ags owns now is just prime for that. They got water and sewer out there, they got everything out there and it's, it's, it's prime and it's right there close to the city.
The, the hard thing though is, right, there, there's not a lot of developers anymore.
Nobody?
And so, and there's not a lot of developers. Uh, our county, you know, my family was in the business of developing land for quite a time and the people that we were competing with don't exist either. So, you know, there's just not a lot of them anymore.
And costs are extremely higher than they used to be, so now what is affordable?
There's two, there, there's, there's economic tools that we can use now and the state has, has lifted the restriction. It used to be a thing called a HO grant, which is a housing grant. But you can only use it once. So La Porte County could use it once, La Porte City could use it once. But now the state has eased up on that for the next four years, you can use it as much as you want. And that way, you can help, you, you create a little TIF area within that house, housing area, and you help pay for the infrastructure. So people aren't gonna go on the hook to put in all the roads, all the sewer, all the water and do everything and then go, okay, now we gotta start selling houses to pay all this back. They don't have the flexibility and the resources.
We got a four, five million dollar investment before we even start.
Before you do anything.
Yes, and, and that's what made, um, the Love's Truck Stop happen. That's what made, uh, there, there's some other things that we're looking at that makes them happen. Is that you actually have to put in some money to make it happen.
I, I just, I find it interesting, I think this is an ongoing conversation that many communities, many counties are having as well in that, who, who gets to decide these things, right? The, the owners of those parcels, you know? Uh, you're gonna have these conversations come up as more solar farms are being talked about here locally. We've got Stark County that has the largest, I think, in the, you know, in the.
And we've got one proposed out there by Roland Prairie.
That's being proposed and there's, I know there's people that don't like having solar, right? So who gets to decide? The people that own the land or the neighbors that don't wanna see it?
Well, that's, that's the thing, you know, when, I won't specify the city that it was in.
Yep.
But there was, there was a mayor that was like, you know, we don't, we don't need another tire store, we don't need another this, a mattress store, we don't need this. We can't, we as a city can't say, no, we don't want, you own a piece of property, like Love's Truck Stop. Love's bought that spot, they can put a truck stop there. Would we prefer some, you know, um, a medical facility where they're, you know, they're higher paying jobs and they're doing this and doing that? Absolutely, but people own property and they're allowed to open businesses and do what they want.
Sell that property, right?
Right, exactly.
It is interesting, you know, we hear that a lot of times. Mike, you're a city of La Porte resident and you probably hear this as well, where another Dollar General, right? As if anybody's all that excited about another Dollar General.
Hey, the people of La Crosse.
People of La Crosse, I've never seen, you know what? Listeners of this podcast in La Crosse, I am excited for you. If I was in Roland Prairie still, cause I grew up in Roland Prairie and we got a Dollar General, I'd be ecstatic. Because we got all of our groceries at the, you know, when we were in a pinch at the gas station. So, but Dollar General has every right to move in there. And if their market research says we can withstand another one, who, who, who says you can stop them? And I don't get excited about it.
And remember where their warehouse is.
Yep, that's true.
Right, and here's the thing, everybody, everybody's quick to complain or say, oh, this is what should be there. But nobody wants to take the chance, nobody wants to take, invest their money, nobody wants to make the commitment to do it. It's all, you know, we've, we're, we've become very strong on being a backseat quarterback going, oh, I wouldn't have done that. What would you do? Throw, give us good ideas, give us solutions to the issues that we have here in La Porte County. We don't need more problems, we just need solutions, that's what we need.
I just wanna spend Mike's money on the investments that I want.
Good luck, it won't go far.
Well, guys, I know you guys have meetings to get to and everything, but you know, for the residents that are listening to this, this is a podcast plugged in La Porte for city of La Porte residents, but there's probably gonna be a decent amount of county residents. Think of a project that maybe, or an idea or something that you guys are working on, that maybe you'd like to clarify for some of the public, they, they don't understand. You maybe get a call or you're getting feedback or you're seeing it online, that people just aren't understanding as well as they should. Um, obviously in a lot of what you do, you can't always give all the details, especially if it's an economic development. But there, there's a, there's just constant, I think, either from a lack of communication from our elected officials, so I don't think residents are always to blame here, but also, you know, lost in translation stuff.
Well, I, I'll just simply say, you know, on the council, we can only make decisions about money. We can make all the suggestions we want and they can fall upon deaf ears. But we're not the deciders or the decision-makers because we have a different branch uh, that does make those decisions and we're talking about the commissioners. So what we need there is we need a group that can work together and, 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 and follow the lead. And you know what the best part is, when they talk and communicate, when we're able to talk and communicate with them and they're willing to be listening and they'll say, you know what, I may not have the best idea, maybe somebody else does. Maybe if I just listen to people, even, even, even the constituents, just listen to people and hear what they have to say, because somebody may have that brilliant idea. I mean, I substitute teach, so sometimes in the classroom, you're gonna get a student that's just gonna come up with something that's so remarkable, you're gonna be held back. And, but the idea is you let them talk and you let people, you kinda guide, this is what we're trying to figure out, this is what we're trying, what is your idea? And, and we've kinda gone through that process recently with, with something. And, and it, and, you know, we didn't get a lot of good ideas. We just, you know, we, we were making decisions with the best information that we have.
I think part of that, Mike, too, is I don't think we, we value humility as a virtue anymore to say, how would I know everything, right? How would, genuinely, how would I know everything? So, you know, um, as an elected official, you don't just get elected and all of a sudden know everything right away, right? And so, but, but Randy knows this thing and, and Adam Cronk and knows this thing and Justin Keel might know this thing, right?
But this is how it works on the council.
Bringing as many people together to help with the problem and then it, none of us, I, trust me, there's probably three people in this room that are smarter than me right now.
There's only, listeners, there's only four of us in here, so.
Well, so, thanks a lot. They didn't know that. But, but here's the thing, you don't have to be the smartest person in the room, but you gotta be able to bring the people that know how to do things, that have connections to do things. That's how you get problems solved. You could lock, you, look at the, look at the problems in this world and problems that are solved. People that are, you know, finding cures for cancer, people are doing this and that. And we've got these little problems, and I call them little problems, they're big problems to the individuals. But in the big scheme of life.
They're solvable.
They're not, right. Let's, let's get down, sit down, roll up our sleeves, stop the BS and the politics and everything else and it, I'm gonna take credit for this and it's not, you know, I don't want you to get credit for it. And, and, and stop the, the blame game and do things and, and get things done in this county. I mean, we, we can fix anything. There's almost, everything is fixable or a solution to it that we think we can get everybody to solve. So, you know, with the complex flood, it's finally coming to an end, so we're getting it done, but the council got involved with that and, and they, Mike asked me to be on there to oversee, get involved in the project, cause they had a construction background. And it's finally coming, so at the end of, I think February, the fifth floor is gonna be done, the prosecutor's gonna move back in, the jail, the sheriff's office is all done, they're getting that cleaned up right now. So there's an end in sight and we think it's gonna be good.
But just notice what you just said, I didn't have the expertise. So I turned around, who on the council has the expertise, has the time? And this is why, this is where we get along so well. We find the people. My expertise is more with finances. You wanna talk a little bit about budget, I'll talk to you about budget. You wanna talk about financial statements, I'll talk to you about financial statements. But that's not his expertise, but that's mine. So we find the best people who are able to do that. And I'm gonna tell you, it was the best thing that we did because it established a good relationship with him and, and the commissioners. Because of his background, he's able to answer questions. They also have some background in it, a few of them do. And so they're able to work together and come up with better ideas when you have two people in the room. And the willingness of, of the commissioners to share because, you know, we have to financially pay for some of it. So it, it always, it's always the best thing to do is have people that are inclusive. Make them part of it, make them feel like they're part of the solution. And then before you know it, you start getting the solution.
And, and you talk about, you've heard the expression that you were living and life got in the way. With, you know, whether, with your, things come up all the time. Well, this complex flood was a big thing for the county. So needless to say, for the last year, little over a year now, it is totally, I wouldn't say derailed, but it's, it's sidetracked.
Takes a lot of mental bandwidth, I didn't like.
It takes a lot of, and it takes a lot of money because we have to front the money for the insurance company. So until we get this all settled and all shaken out, there's a lot, you know, that's what we have to work to keep it all together. So it's, we had a complex flood that got in the way that nobody anticipated, but by God, we.
Was there anything for Randy that you wanted to add then, just kinda like Mike did about things that, you know, maybe our listeners, you know, the things that you wanna clarify or something that you, you kinda wanna get off of, or was that it?
I think, I think that was it, but you know, the other thing is, is that, um, I, to echo what Mike said, we're the fiscal body. So I get calls from people saying, hey, I need you to do this. It's like, I'd be happy to help you any way I can and, and people know that I will. But we're responsible for the finances of the county. The commissioners take care of the buildings, the personnel, um, things like that. We just, we're fiscal. And so they, they need to understand the separation there, but I'm, I'm doing a lot of things that normally a commissioner would be asked to do. And I don't mind doing it, I mean, I, I enjoy it. My wife thinks I'm, like, need to be checked because, you know, I spend so much time.
That's not about this, though, that's not about this.
It's other things, yeah, thanks. But it, but it is, it is, um, the fact that, that, like you said before, there's the separation between the two. But we can, you know, I'm, I'm just happy to do whatever we need to do in this county and, and take care of things, so make it better.
The only tidbit I wanna throw out is that, you know, what started this last year on the FMEC, the fairgrounds. And, you know, there's a lot to be said there, we're going through.
We're gonna need another hour.
Yeah, I'll keep it real short. Right now, we're starting a long-term plan of what we wanna see with, what facilities do we wanna see there that's gonna help take us to the next level?
So that's what we have at four o'clock, we have a comprehensive plan, so we're looking.
Our listeners don't know what time it is, you know, for us, so.
Well, it's four o'clock our time.
It's almost four o'clock, listeners.
But, but that's what we're looking at, we're looking at a five-year, what we can do immediately. What buildings out there do we wanna keep that don't need to be replaced? So we can start with a clean slate. And we've got some fantastic ideas and some things coming together. And we've got the planners from Michigan City, La Porte, the county, we've got, um, the 4H, we've got, FMEC, we've, we've got, we're bringing all these people from all over the county, South County and everywhere, to give input on this and we want a five-year, 10-year, 20-year plan for the fairgrounds to make it the best that it could possibly be. And I'm telling you, it's, all it's gonna take is a lot of money. That's it, it'll be great, it'll be great.
It's just the easy answer, just throw a lot of money?
No, it's not. But the plan is, at, at the end of the meeting, and you talked about somebody where people are kinda quiet and they don't wanna, you know, they don't know if they'd have a good idea. At the end of one of the last meetings, um, a young lady says, we're just about done. She goes, I got a, I got a suggestion, what about if we redid this and do that? We all looked there and we're like, my God, that's a fantastic idea. She goes, well, I just wasn't sure if anybody would like it. It's like, you gotta speak up, you gotta, you know, come forward and, and volunteer, be in groups, be org, being connected with everybody. And, and everybody's opinion, they don't, they don't realize it, but sometimes it's just that little subtle suggestion that might be what tips it, makes everything possible and makes it work.
I noticed that you were gonna say everybody's opinion matters until you looked at me and then you changed that real quick.
I was actually looking at her.
Yeah, Lindsay, yeah, obviously. Well, uh, Councilman, I'm, I'm grateful you guys came into this early episode of Plugged In La Porte. Uh, listeners, I, I wanna say that it is always good to have elected officials that are willing to talk and are willing to engage with ideas, especially when you, when you push back a little bit on some of the things that are happening and want more clarification. So, uh, again, thank you so much for being on the show.
Thank you.
Thank you as well.
La Porte residents love small businesses, from the local restaurants that keep us well-fed to the manufacturers that create and make some of the area's greatest products. One of the segments you're gonna hear often on this podcast is something we call the Small Business Spotlight, where we shine a beam on the very backbone of our community, the vibrant, passionate and resilient spirit of small businesses here in downtown La Porte. And today, we're venturing into the world of petals, stems and the timeless language of flowers with Todi Floral. Nestled in the heart of downtown La Porte, though this business has operated in La Porte for what, nearly 100 years? Since 2013, Todi Floral has been spreading joy one bloom at a time under the loving care and visionary leadership of Jessica Granger. Today, we'll dive deep into Jessica's floral world, explore the essence of crafting bespoke bouquets and maybe you can even explain to me how you do it and discover how Todi Floral has blossomed into a pillar of this community, all while navigating the ebbs and flows of small business ownership and the pandemic. Uh, Jessica, how are you? Welcome to the, welcome to the podcast.
I'm good, thank you for having me.
Is this your first podcast experience?
Uh, first podcast, yes. We've done some radio spots with Dennis at, at our local radio station, but this is number one for me.
All right, well, it's good to have you. So, um, I was reading an article about you just last night, I was, as I was preparing for this, this podcast episode, and you took over Todi Floral, which if you've been in La Porte for any amount of time, really probably anybody in La Porte now has heard of Todi Floral, cause it's been around for so long.
I hope so, 1926.
Yeah, so, 1926, but you took over in 2013, but you had been with Todi Floral for years before that, is that correct?
13 years before I took over, yes.
And you've now had it for almost 11 years.
In, uh, yeah, in April.
Wow.
Oh my gosh.
Sorry.
It, it seems like it's flown by, like it really has.
And you've taken it from different locations, correct?
I did, I got crazy a few years ago and decided to move the whole shop.
Yeah, so tell me, why, why did you go downtown?
I love our downtown and I think it's really like turning around and becoming super fun and people are really like embracing the changes that have happened, so we wanted to be a part of it.
So has it been a good decision for you? I mean, you know, I, I, obviously, you, you've got, it's a really cool building, I'll say that. Um, it's a renovated building, it's, it's really wonderful. Has it been a good business decision to come downtown as well?
100%. Uh, we did not get shoppers at the other location, we were a little too far.
Just like walk-through kind of?
Right, we were a little too far out of the loop down there, so we decided to just, you know, head down the street a little bit, uh, really, and it's kinda fun back to where Todi started, right around that same area in 1926.
I don't know if everyone listening to this podcast understands that Todi Floral isn't just a florist. I didn't know this until I went into your store. And it is almost like a boutique, you, you've got all kinds of different things in there. I mean, obviously floral arrangements, you know, flowers, if you ever need flowers, it is a good place to go for that. But talk a little bit about what else you have in the store and why you've kind of, you know, evolved the, the traditional florist to where you've taken it.
That's one of the main reasons why we moved downtown. I felt like we didn't have the shoppers to really maintain the front part of the store. So the flower shop, of course, everyone knows Todi Floral to be flowers, but we also have a huge gift line. Um, we've got home decor and jewelry, we even have added some clothes, which has really been fun. been fun. Um, you know, I think it's, it's most satisfying when people walk through the door and they say like, wow, I didn't know you had all of that. And that was exactly why we decided to move.
So I, I want to talk a little bit about, because it's small business, right? Um, it's hard to make it as a small business. Um, where, where can you see Todi Floral going?
I think after the move, um, it's just opened their door for a lot of opportunities like this. Um, I was a member of the bid board for downtown Lepore, which was really exciting. Um, we've become a part of, you know, a lot of the downtown activities that have taken place. So just a lot more of that, a lot more community involvement. Um, as our, as our downtown continues to grow, we are excited to be a part of all of it.
So as some of our listeners understand, Lepore is in this weird economic and geographical and even infrastructural, you know, um, evolution. Um, we've got new roads. We've got roads that need to be replaced. We've got sidewalks. We've got planters and we don't even know if the future of the planters is going to be here on, on Lincoln Way. But talk about, um, what are some of the challenges you see for downtown businesses in Lepore?
So being on the bid board, which is the business improvement district, um, gave me a lot of insight into that. And I know that there are a lot of exciting changes that they are planning on implementing, you know, with the downtown long-term plan. Um, I think obviously everyone's main concern is parking.
Do you see that as an issue?
A little bit. Honestly, we, I, I feel like if people just come downtown and try to park, it's not as bad as you think. Um, the city added a lot of angle parking on Clay Street when we moved in, you know, once our, once our block became a little more like populated and open to more businesses, they added a whole street of, of angle parking. So that's really helped if you're not comfortable parking on Lincoln Way. Um, I think the number one concern is slowing down traffic. So I know there's always a debate between like getting the semis off of the highway versus letting them, you know, continue their route.
Do you have an opinion on it?
I, I don't necessarily have an opinion about the semis. I think just traffic in general. I know we're 25 miles an hour downtown, but it doesn't seem like people really abide by that. Um, not even close. So I think we just need to slow down whatever traffic is there.
So for, for those that are, maybe somebody's listening to this podcast and they want to open a small business downtown, or they want to maybe come to Lepore to open a small business, how would you sell Lepore to somebody thinking about, you know, investing into Lepore?
I think up and coming for sure. I mean, I, I know that we're, we're an old town, right? We've got a lot of history and we've got a lot of nostalgic buildings. And I think people are definitely doing what they can to like renovate and bring those buildings back to what they used to be. Um, my landlord there, I rent the building as Troy Clark. He's bought so many buildings downtown with the best of intentions to like bring them back to what they used to be. So I think it's the best time right now to become established downtown so that when we really take off and that long-term plan is put into place, like you're going to be there and you're going to be a part of it already.
So let's, let's get into in our last little section here, let's talk a little bit about flowers. Okay.
Okay. I like flowers. Yeah. Let's do it.
So, um, let's say, I'm going to, I'm going to give you a scenario. I need to get flowers for somebody I deeply care about. Let's say, I don't know when this is going to come out, but let's say it's, we're getting close to Valentine's Day. Do you have to get roses?
You don't have to get roses. Um, you know, a lot of people come in and they tell us like she hates roses. And I think usually when we hear that, it means that she doesn't appreciate red roses, which is fine. There's so many different colors, but there's also so many choices, you know, of bouquets without roses at all. So, you know, there's so many different choices of lilies and gerbera daisies. And then we can get really crazy with some tropical flowers. So there's lots of ways to convey that sentiment without including roses for sure.
Give me a flower that maybe many people don't know about that is a fantastic flower that you like to, to, to get out there.
I, I really love the tropical flowers. So I think Birds of Paradise is really cool. It opens, you know, like a, like a bird's beak and it's all bright and orange and purple and lots of color. And then it allows us to make something like really cool. You know, you're not going to just put that in a vase with carnations. You're going to put some really cool line flowers and make it in, into just a really funky shape. So.
So let's say theoretically, um, this situation obviously doesn't exist, but let's say there's a 42-year-old guy that knows nothing about flowers, but maybe wants to buy something for, um, and, and it's intimidating to go into a floral shop because they'll say, what do you want? And they don't know. What should they say?
We don't ask, what do you want? So you're, you're honestly our favorite type of customer because it allows us to do our job and do what we love and be creative. So we would ask you questions like, do you know if she has a favorite flower or favorite color? Because most guys say like, oh, well, she wears a lot of purple. And then we can kind of use that as a jumping point and, you know, show you some pictures or show you some things in the cooler. And then you can kind of pick and choose, or we can just completely make it up and, and we promise you'll love it.
Yeah. No judgment, huh?
Uh, not at all. We do not expect anyone to come through the door and know anything about flowers because why would you? I mean, you can look at something and think that it's pretty, but why would you know the ins and outs of it? I don't know the ins and outs of anyone else's job. So I think that people get intimidated sometimes when they come in and, and we hope that once you leave Todi's, that you don't feel that way anymore because it should be fun. Flowers are awesome. You should have fun picking them out.
All right, Jessica. Where can people find you? How can people connect with you?
We are at 610 Lincoln Way, downtown Lepore. We're right across the street from Mucho Maz and right next door to the Red Door. Um, our phone number is 219-362-1502 and we are at todflorel.com. We're open nine to five, Monday through Friday and nine to one on Saturday and you can order online or in person.
Jessica, it's been an honor to meet you. Thank you so much for coming on Plugged In Lepore. And that's a wrap on the second electrifying episode of Plugged In Lepore. A huge thank you to our guests, Lepore County Councilman Randy Novak and Mike Rosenbaum for shedding light on the work happening within our county government. I'd also like to thank Jessica Granger, the owner of Todi Floral and a key figure to our downtown business community. As today's episode comes to a close, I want to express my gratitude for you, our listeners, for tuning in and engaging with the heart and soul of our community. Your curiosity and support are what drives this podcast. A special thank you to our sponsor, the Lepore Economic Advancement Partnership, whose dedication to the economic and social vibrancy of our area makes initiatives like the Plugged In Lepore podcast possible. Their efforts to foster growth and opportunities and just continue to put out information are what keep our community plugged in and poised for a better future. Before we conclude, make sure to subscribe to stay updated on all things Lepore. Additionally, please don't hesitate to reach out with your thoughts, questions or suggestions. For future episodes, you can find me on Facebook, Instagram, all, all of the social medias and send me a message.